We are the town's legislature, kinda like the congress for our town. We're here to act on the articles in the town meeting warrant. My name's Stephen Forrest, I'm the moderator. I chair the meeting, I decide questions of order. I want to take just a couple of minutes to explain to you how our meeting works. Town meetings are willing, it's a gathering of all the willing voters of the town. It's a legislature to decide on the matter set forth in the warrant. You should have seen a copy of the warrant. We will act on every item in the warrant, we will not act on anything that is not in the warrant. We deal with the warrant only. The individual items on the warrant are called warrant articles. A warrant article, we'll address the warrant articles one by one. The procedure generally begins with me reading the article or a summary of the article. The article, a warrant article poses a question. I will then ask for a motion, which is a proposed answer to that question, which could be answered a lot of different ways.
Now, that was me, sorry.
Hello? Our recess is over. We're gonna pick up where we left off, which was explaining a little bit about a warrant article, which is a question that the, a motion will propose an answer to. We'll then get a finance committee recommendation, we will then discuss it. Everyone is welcome to speak in favor or against the motion. If you want to do so, you step to one of these microphones, lines will form behind them, and I will call you on you in order to speak. We have rules, and we need them to keep a group of people this big on topic and doing what we need to do as quickly as we can. So, even though there are lots of rules, they're all summed up in these four simple things. We are polite to one another. We deal with only one thing at a time, no one gets an unfair advantage, and then we move it along as fast as we can without sacrificing one through three. I'm gonna spare you a long explanation of the rules, and just correct you if you stray outside them, because I think you'd rather get onto this than hear me pontificate on the rules. I am gonna ask you, though, when you go to speak, that you wait to be recognized by me. Begin by stating your name, speak only to the motion on the floor before the meeting at the moment, and no personal speech. We don't mention anybody else by name. You may find that in order to come to the right decision on the question before you, you may need to ask a question of someone. If you want to do so, that's fine. There are people in the school committee, there are, we have town council, we have the board of selectmen, town administrator who can answer questions for you, but we have kind of an odd procedure for doing that. If you want to ask town council a question, I'm gonna ask you to say, "Mr. Moderator, through you, I have a question for town council." I will say, "What is your question?" You will say, whatever your question is. I will say, "Town council, would you please answer that question?" I will pass the question on to him, he will then answer me back, and I will go back to you. You not talk back and forth between each other. That may seem odd, but if you've been here for a while, you'd understand why we do that. You may interrupt a speaker in two circumstances. One is a point of order, where you think I am conducting the meeting incorrectly, which has happened before and is likely to happen again at some point. If you think that I am violating the rules or correct procedure, please stand up and say, "Mr. Moderator, I rise to a point of order." I will say, "What is your point of order?" You will tell me what you think I'm doing wrong. If I agree with you, I will correct the proceedings. If I don't, I won't. The other is a point of privilege, which was the big issue tonight. A point of privilege is, if you are unable to participate in the meeting to the extent that you would like to, because of noise around you, because the volume isn't right, anything like that, please stand up and say, "Mr. Moderator, I rise to a point of privilege," and we will do whatever we can to allow your participation to be the way you want it to be. And even though there are a lot of rules, the penalty for violating them is very small. I will just ask you to get back within the rules. So, we have two quick motions that we're gonna deal with that are just procedural things before we get to the warrant. I'm gonna ask if someone would please offer a motion that this meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant, and the constable's return of service of that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to read warrant articles verbatim, but may refer to them by number and subject matter. If someone would say so moved, that would be fine. Is there a second? Motion to second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye. Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. So that's how we do it. And for the people in the cafeteria, I'm gonna ask the assistant moderator to tell me how he counted that vote, so we're gonna need to go through this process with each of our votes. Actually, I'm gonna declare that carried, because it was unanimous in this room, and there are more people in this room than there were in the other one, so even if they all voted no, that would carry. It's not a joke, it's a practical matter. There are more people in this room than are there. So, I assume that carried in your room, yes? Okay, thanks. Please stay on the line. Okay, now another. We are gonna face some questions tonight that require a two-thirds majority to pass. If we don't pass this, I have to count every single vote in the room. Even if it's unanimous but one, I have to count them. So I'm gonna ask for a motion that if a two-thirds vote is required by statute, the moderator may be authorized to declare a two-thirds vote in the same manner as the majority vote is declared, provided however, that if a vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, the moderator shall verify it by taking account. So moved? Great, second? Any discussion of that? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye. Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. So, we move to Article One, which is to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended under the direction of the Westport School Building Committee for the design management and new construction of the Westport Middle-High School as described in the article. This is sponsored by the Town School Building Committee and the Board of Selectmen. And may I ask Ms. Barron to please offer some motion? Yes? I hope so.
I move that the town of Westport appropriate the amount of $96,884,896 for the purpose of paying costs of the design, management, and construction of a new Westport Middle-High School to be located at the existing Westport Middle School site, 400 Old County Road, Westport, Mass., which project shall include but not be limited to the abatement and demolition of the existing middle school building, constructing, fully furnishing, and equipping a new middle high school to serve students in grades five through 12, and any appropriate related programming, and including associated site improvements, utilities, roadways, parking, athletic fields, tennis courts, domestic well, septic system, and all incidental or related expenses, parentheses, the project, close parentheses, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least 50 years, and for which the town of Westport may be eligible for a grant from the Westport, from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the board of selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, that the town of Westport acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Westport, provided that any grant that the town of Westport may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, forty-nine and forty-seven hundredths percent of eligible, forty-nine point four-seven percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided further that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitation on taxes imposed by Mass. General Law 59, Section 21(c), Proposition Two and a Half, that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Westport and the MSBA, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you. Is there a second? May I have the finance committee recommendation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The finance committee has voted to recommend Article One with one abstention.
Thank you. And before we begin discussion, our attendance for tonight is 140 from Precinct A, 280 from Precinct D, 142 from Precinct C, 162 from Precinct D, 281 from Precinct E, for a total of 1,005. Give yourselves a hand. So, we, sometimes on complex articles like this one, we begin discussion by offering the proponents of the article an opportunity to make a presentation. Normally, we limit speech to five minutes, and we normally limit presentations to 10 minutes. However, because this is so complex, the presenters have asked if the meeting would allow them 20 minutes for their presentation. I'm not gonna make that decision unilaterally. I'm gonna ask you to vote and tell me if you, and vote whether you would like to allow the proponents of Article One to make a 20-minute presentation rather than the usual 10. So all those in favor of allowing a 20-minute presentation on Article One will please say aye? Those opposed? Okay, that is carried in the auditorium? Okay. Can I see, can I see a show of hands in this room for those in favor, please? And so it, hello? So it did not carry there. Okay. Then we will need to ask the tellers to come forward. We're gonna have to take a hand count to find out whether, unless the presenters would like to have two separate people, one person speak for 10 minutes and two others speak for five in turn, and save us this problem. Well, so the initial presentation is allowed 10 minutes. All other speakers are allowed five. So you could do 10 minutes and then have, and then in turn, two other people could speak for five, or we will have to do the count. Okay, so, so they will give us a 10-minute presentation then? So, we will have a... Can we get this mic on, please?
Yes, Mr. Cuttino.
Can we get this mic on, please?
Turn it down.
Can you hear that?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, just a question.
A point of order, a point of order. You can interrupt the proceedings for a point of order, but if it's a question unrelated to a point of order, I'm gonna ask it.
It's a procedural question. Normally, we have the complete motion in front of us, either on paper or on the screen. Now, when she read that motion, there were a number of areas that are not in our packets, and I'm just curious, how, are they going to be as part of the presentation, or what? I heard her say something about the funds are gonna be controlled and expended by the building committee, that was not in here. Some of the other things were not. I'm just asking.
Right. So, as we said earlier, a warrant article proposes the question. It proposes a question. Ms. Barron just offered us an answer to that question, which was, because of the nature of the project and some fairly complex legalese. Now, I believe there were several copies of that motion printed and put on the table for handouts, were there not? But apparently, were there?
I didn't prepare motion, copies of the motion. I don't know if where those, whose responsibility that was.
Well, so where that, where that leaves us is, if anyone has a question about the motion, they can ask it. We will have the motion read again, if you would like to have the motion read again.
We don't want to waste people's time with reading an entire motion again. Could we at least hear at some point the parts of the motion that are not in our written material tonight? So we just know, at least that part, so we know what we're voting on.
Okay, Ms. Barron, will you continue, please?
Certainly. With regard to that motion, I guess I would like to, I would turn to our town council to be able to...
Can you lower the microphone so they can hear it a little better?
Let me say on behalf of the Westport School Building Committee, to our project management team, our architects, we are very excited that they have the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you for allowing us to make this presentation. With all the best information at your disposal, we hope you will agree that the solution we've reached in collaboration with the Mass. State Building Authority to build a five-through-12 middle high school on the middle school site is the best decision for Westport and its future. Our diverse 20-member building committee has come to this recommendation after a long public process, almost three years. We have had 53 public school building committee meetings, countless subcommittee meetings, four public forums, and numerous newspaper articles detailing our process. Just so you know, we've received the public support of three newspapers, the New Bedford Standard Times, the Herald News, and Shorelines, and the unanimous support of the finance committee, the board of selectmen, and the school committee. They all agree that Westport has been given an opportunity it should not pass up. We are confronted with a middle school unusable in its present condition for educational purposes, and a 69-year-old high school at the end of its shelf life. We have a chance for the state to pick up 50% of eligible costs for building this new school, 40% of the entire project, which includes tearing down the middle school and cleaning up the middle school site. They all agree that this is the most cost-effective, efficient approach to addressing the town's unavoidably, unavoidable facility needs while minimizing the long-term impacts to our taxpayers. We will likely have one chance to get the state to pick up this much of the tab and be able to solve Westport's education needs with one new building. We are proud of the process, excited about what we have done, and now it is in your hands, and we want to answer any questions you have at the completion of our PowerPoint presentation. So a lot of questions have come to our attention. Why build a new five-through-12 school? Why don't we just renovate? Did we look into regionalization? Several questions. Each of these questions listed on the slide is dealt with in some detail on handouts that we provided tonight, and I hope most, most of you got a chance, we had a lot of time for you to be able to look at those, if you've got a copy. They are more generally addressed in this PowerPoint presentation. So at this time, we need to ask ourselves, where are we now? Town meeting allocated $700,000 for a feasibility study, which confirmed the severe problems which we urgently need to address. The high school is 69 years old and requires major upgrades and renovations. This building has outlived its useful life. Classroom sizes are inadequate and lack the infrastructure for modern teaching and learning methods. Many of the classrooms used by students today lack ventilation, are extremely small, and don't allow space for the kinds of programs that teachers want to teach. The middle school building is contaminated and beyond repair. We estimate that it will cost between $52 and $64 million to renovate it, and it may not be possible to remove the PCBs to the level required by the EPA. This vacant, contaminated building continues to cost the town $100,000 per year. Now we ask, why is it the time to build? The MSBA has overseen our process for the last three years and approved us every step of the way. They have awarded us $38.1 million in aid. This includes half of the cost of abating and demolishing the middle school, more than $2 million. The MSBA also ranked Westport's design as one of the, as the most cost-effective of the 10 schools currently being built by the MSBA. And our tax rate will still stay low. Currently, we are ranked 21st from the bottom of 351 Massachusetts communities, and after the borrowing for this new school, we would rank 22 from the bottom. And what if we vote no tonight? We will lose our state aid for the building and for the demolishing of the middle school. We will lose the benefit of the money put forward towards this feasibility study. If we want to build further down the road, we will not get MSBA funds. We will still also have to conduct another feasibility study and pay for it entirely ourselves. That cost is probably $1 million. We will also continue to need temporary housing for some students. This is a temporary solution and is costing the town $511,000 over a three-year period. Construction costs are also continuing to increase by 4% per year, and every month of delay adds a projected $200,000 to the cost of this project. If we don't do this project now, it will cost much more down the road. A decision not to invest in a quality school at this time will cost taxpayers more money in the long run, as home values fail to keep pace with other communities. At this time, I urge you to look at the Lincoln case study. The town of Lincoln, Massachusetts, was accepted into the MSBA pipeline, but did not get approval at their town meeting in 2012. Ever since then, they have been trying unsuccessfully to get back into that pipeline, but now they must build their school completely on their own dime. Lincoln taxpayers were going to pay $29 million, but now they will be paying between $50 and $85 million for a scaled-down project, so they're getting less and paying a lot more. So our total project cost, $96.9 million, and that was what was in the motion, spelled out completely. The town share is $58.8 million. We are getting a $100 million project for $58 million. The state is picking up 50% of the eligible cost for this project. We are getting 40% of the entire project paid by the state. That is a 40% discount on something we need to do. We will lose this bargain if we wait. This slide breaks down the various components of the $96.9 million cost. To save time, I'm just gonna say that we have our project management team here, and they can explain these costs to you, but I do want to point out that we have $4 million in construction contingency, in case we need it, if things come up. Let's just go to the next slide. So we apologize for this slide. It isn't easy to read on the screen. We wanted to figure out what solutions over a 30-year period would save us the most money. We looked at three scenarios. Two of the scenarios were we would build a five-through-eight school now and a high school 10 years later, and then the present scenario where we're asking for a five-through-12 school, middle high school now. So let's look at the next slide, which has some of the details enlarged. High school will need to be replaced in the very near future. We have to do something right away about the middle school, because we have kids crammed into the high school and kids in temporary units at the MacHumber. Both temporary solutions. So if you look at that first scenario, we would build a five-through-eight middle school now and a high school in 10 years, and we would get MSBA funding in the 10 years from now, even though that is unlikely. This scenario would cost taxpayers $184 million over 30 years. Scenario two is that we would build a five-through-eight middle school now and get no funding from the MSBA for a high school 10 years from now. This scenario would cost taxpayers $231 million over 30 years. Scenario three, what we are proposing tonight, is that we build a five-through-12 school now with MSBA funds. This scenario costs taxpayers $135 million over a 30-year period. You can see that building a five-through-12 school now is by far the cheapest alternative. The $135 million figure includes the total project cost, interest on the bond, and maintenance and operating costs over those 30 years. It would save Westport residents $49 to $96 million over the other two options. So now we look at what is the tax impact of this project? This chart shows that for a 30-year, $58.8 million bond, each $100,000 in property value would be assessed a tax of $9 per month, or $103 per year. So for an average $400,000 property in Westport, the amount of tax increase per year would be $412. And at this time, we ask ourselves, what votes are needed? Approval of this new school is a two-step process.
Pardon me, you have 30 seconds remaining on your 10 minutes. Just one more.
First, we must vote tonight and pass this motion by a two-thirds majority. Once this article is approved tonight, we must vote again at the ballot box on February 27th. Unlike overrides, exclusions do not become part of the tax base upon which the levy limit is calculated for future years. It is not a permanent increase.
That is the end of your 10 minutes, so for me to be fair and consistent with rules, I have to offer the floor to other speakers now, so if anyone else would like to speak and discussion under Article One, please step to a microphone. That includes the people in the cafeteria, who are welcome to step into the auditorium to speak.
My wife Judy and I moved to Westport in 1996. We moved here because we wanted a nice, low-tax place, and we have a nice, low-tax place. Even with this bond issue, if it is passed, we will still have a nice, low-tax place. I want to add that I don't have any children in the Westport school system. I don't think I have any relatives in the Westport school system. I just want to make a couple of other points. When we, shortly after we moved here, a bond issue to renovate or the, repair the roofs of some of the Westport schools was defeated. A somewhat smaller bond issue passed a few years, a little time later. I hate to think of all the mold and the other maintenance costs that were attributed to that delay. Sometime ago, we had a proposition for a joint police and fire station. I can't remember, and my technical skills with the computer aren't enough for me to figure out what it was, but I know it was probably more than three, or less than three-quarters of the final cost that we are now facing, because we wouldn't do the right thing at that time. Let's do the right thing now and save money.
Rules don't allow anyone to speak for a second time until everyone has had their first chance, but seeing no one else wanting a first chance, you may continue.
Jonathan, do you want to go through?
Moderator, may I take three minutes?
Sure. Identify yourself, please.
My name's Jonathan Levy. I'm the architect, the lead designer, and principal in charge for Jonathan Levy Architects, the town's architect.
Thank you.
I'm also a 50-year resident of Westport by coincidence. Been kicking around this town for a long time. It's enormously fulfilling to be a part of what promises to be a bright new future for the town. the town. I'm gonna spend three minutes explaining to you what's taken two years to create, together with all my, uh, friends and-
Can everyone hear the speaker well enough?
And collaborators, uh, among-
Perhaps you raise the microphone just a little. I think you're-
School building committee.
Shade taller than our last speaker.
Just a shade. Good. So I'm gonna try to describe this in, uh, just a few minutes. Uh, first item is to just rattle through the various features of the project. 187,000 square feet. It's co-located. That means that we have a middle and a high school. Unlike other towns that co-mingle their middle and high school students, the parents of Westport said they want those students be able to be separated. Diane mentioned the efficiency of the project. One of those efficiencies is centralizing the school maintenance facilities, uh, as part of this new project. Also, of course, as you know, uh, the state will be picking up a large part of the tab of abating and demolishing and removing all the contaminated soils around the existing middle school, which is an eyesore in the town right now. The new site features, uh, a state-of-the-art denitrification septic system. I know many of the butters and others of us who are in the watershed are concerned about that. Uh, new wells, two new, uh, one new well and one existing well, uh, retained for, uh, backup purposes. New efficient plumbing fixtures, um, full sprinkler system, which the existing schools do not have, and which is a threat to our children. Uh, new regulation-sized varsity athletic fields, which we do not have now, which will allow tournament play. Uh, community features such as an elevated walking track inside, because this is truly going to be an intergenerational facility, not just for the children, but for the entire town. The existing tennis courts, which are right in the middle of the site, uh, will be moved and replaced in, in their same form as today. And then many of us are concerned about Old County Road and the traffic there. Uh, there'll be, uh, significant improvement to what we experienced during, when the middle school was in operation. All the traffic will be off the road. Uh, there'll be 300 new parking spaces. There'll be queuing for over 1,000 linear feet for parent drop-off. Uh, plenty of queuing for all the buses, so all of that traffic will be off, off, off the roads. This is the site plan. It shows the regulation athletic fields, the library, Old County Roads at the bottom, north is at the top, the elementary school in the back. The elementary school will be largely unchanged, unchanged. The new school is oriented to the sun, that's why it looks like that. It's gonna harvest the sun's, the good part of the sun's energy for daylight in the classrooms, and, and keep away the bad part of the sun's energy. There's also a front lawn in the, in the front of the school, which I hope will become a new community meeting place, a new place for us all to come together. Here's the interior floor plan. Uh, I don't have time to really explain all of it to you in detail. What I can tell you is that it reflects a lot of detailed discussion coming out of your school faculty, your wonderful school faculty here, which is hobbled by poor facilities, um, and the parents and the community. It reflects a truly 21st century vision for education that's gonna uplift the kids in Westport and position them for successful careers, uh, in the world today, which is a very different kind of school than the school that we all grew up with. A school today is as different from a, a school of the 1940s, which is the one that we're sitting in, uh, than a, than a library is from a courthouse. Totally different kind of building, because it has community spaces, has much larger classrooms, because the classrooms are necessary to be large, because there are multiple activities happening in them all the time. And a whole variety of collaboration spaces that allow kids to use the web. The web is the big game changer for all of us, in our work and in our education. Uh, and that means, school means collaboration spaces, where the kids can take what they've learned on the web. They don't need to learn it from the mouths of the teachers. They learn it on their own, and then they come together in what's called project-based learning, and they need places to do that.
Excuse me, you have 20 seconds left in your five minutes.
Very good. I'm almost done. Here are some, uh, artist renderings of what those spaces will look like, including several of the key spaces for them that, uh, were particular to the town's interests, the acre space, the classrooms, the gym and walking track, and the courtyard, which I think will be one of the great features of the new school. And here's what it looks like fitting into the townscape on Old County Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of the motion under Article One? Sir?
I'm considerably taller than the last person. Uh, my name is Matt Forbes. Um, I think one parent should get up here and say that we should build a school, so I'm gonna be that guy. What you don't know about me is I'm looking to buy a house. I live in Westport and I rent. And it turns out, no one's gonna give me 40% to buy that new house. Okay? We are talking Powerball money, alright? They are gonna give us, by my estimation, $37 million. We're not getting that next time. For all the people who think, hey, you know what, we don't, I've heard this on Facebook, right? We don't need a, we don't, we don't need a new car, right? This is a car. We don't need a new car. This is not a car. This is 3, 4X the town operating budget, and we're getting like 40% off. You're not getting it again. I think most people in here are gonna vote yes, so I feel ridiculous for being up here. However, think about that for a second. It's not coming around again. It's just not going to. Today is the day. We vote yes, we get it. I, I win. I've got four kids, two in the Mac, two in Wes. I'm the winner here, but so are the next 50 years of kids in Westport. It's time. Vote yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call the question.
Mr. Valcourt, you are recognized?
I would like to call the question.
Okay.
Before that happens, could I just ask-
I'm sorry.
Point of order?
Okay.
I'll withdraw. I'll withdraw.
Point of order that, um, Tim King needs to say something about CIPC and, and, um, make a report before we can vote on this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. King, would you like to address us about the CIPC recommendation?
I'm the chairman of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. The Capital Improvement Planning Committee, uh, has met and discussed this project a couple of times, and they voted in favor of this project, uh, at their regularly scheduled meeting about, uh, four weeks ago.
Thank you. Mr. Valcourt, would you like to be recognized now?
If I could, I would like to call the question.
Yes. So, what that means is, Mr. Valcourt, um, thinks that he has heard all he needs to hear in discussion under the, the motion under Article One. So we're gonna take a vote now, um, and if you vote yes, that means you've heard everything that you need to hear about Article One, and you're prepared to vote yes or no on that question. Um, a no vote means, no, you would like to hear more discussion before we actually vote on Article One. Is that clear to everyone? So, all those in favor of calling the question and suspending debate on Article One moving directly to, to a vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously in, uh, in the auditorium. May I ask Mr. Brightman to step into the hall and, or call me on his cellphone so that we can speak, and I can get the vote from the auditor, from the cafeteria?
Mr. Forbes, our electors' vote is unanimous.
Thank you. So, that just means that we're finished with debate on Article One. Now we're actually going to vote on the question. So a yes vote means that you would like to adopt the motion presented by Ms. Baron, and no vote means you would not. All those in favor will please raise their hands. Those opposed? Um, I'm gonna, I'm now gonna walk into the cafeteria and look at the hands there. Excuse me. Short recess. So, we're gonna take just a minute and let those who are leaving, um, leave and see if perhaps we can get the people from the cafeteria in here and make the rest of the meeting go a little bit more smoothly. I think it'll be worth the short wait. And while we're waiting, could I ask everybody to join me in giving a hand to, uh, our treasurer and former moderator Brad Brightman, who helped us out out there and without whom this would not have been possible? Thank you very, very much. Okay, are there, are there still people waiting to be checked in from the cafeteria?
No.
No? Okay, great, thank you. Then we proceed with Article Two, to see if the town will vote to amend section 6706 of the town bylaws establishing authorized revolving funds as described in the article. This is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and the Building Inspector. Mr. Willett, will you offer some motion, please?
I move the town adopt the provisions of Article Two as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Yes.
The motion is second. We have the Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee has voted, uh, to unanimously recommend, in favor of Article Two.
Thank you. Is there, is there any discussion of the motion under Article Two? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Conservation Commission to expend $350,000 appropriated from the town's Community Preservation Fund by the 2017 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of acquiring an interest or interest in land located at 573 Adamsville Road, as described in the article, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and by the Conservation Commission. Mr. Willett, will you offer some motion?
I move the town adopt the provisions of Article Three as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Gillespie?
Yeah, Tim Gillespie, um, member of the Community Preservation Committee. Last year, uh, the Community Preservation Committee brought an article to town meeting to appropriate $350,000 from Community Preservation Funds to buy a conservation restriction on the land, the open land in the back at the St. Vincent de Paul Camp, and the town vigorously supported that idea. And what we did not do at that time was put the language in that motion that would authorize the Conservation Commission to actually spend that money. And that's one thing that this article is doing, and what it's doing even more importantly, it is enabling us to take advantage of a land grant that the town was awarded after we approved this thing last year. Uh, we were awarded $196,000 through the, I don't have my glasses on, hold on. Through the Acquisitions for Natural Diversity Grant, which is a, a Massachusetts program for this kind of deal. And so the town applied for this grant and was awarded it, and we need to give the town permission and pass this article, say yes on this article, so we can get that money. And then that money will reimburse the town that $196,000. Pretty easy, right? Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion under Article Three? Seeing none, all those in, yes. Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer a parcel of land located on the east side of Sanford Road to the custody of the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease it for up to 20 years, as described in the article. Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Willett, will you offer some motion?
I move the town adopt the provisions of Article Four as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. We have the Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee has voted to unanimously recommend Article Four.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of the motion under Article Four? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for legislation authorizing a wine and malt beverages license not to be drunk on premises, parentheses, package store, to RNC Market Incorporated, 151 State Road, Westport, as described in the article. This is by petition. Um, and a, a quick note about petition articles. Those of you who've been to town meeting, uh, many times in the past, know that it has been our tradition, town meeting operates under, um, rules outlined in a book called Town Meeting Time by our bylaws, and then tradition, tradition's a big part of it. So, by tradition, we have always had the petitioner make a motion under petition articles. But it occurred to me, for the first time this year, that there is no "the petitioner." The petition has several names on it. Even though there's often been someone who's sort of the driving force behind a petition, there are not, there's no such thing as "the petitioner." So, um, that not making any sense, I'm gonna allow a motion from anyone whose name was on the petition. And I believe, uh, Mr. Coyne is going to offer some motion?
Left. Uh-oh. Right there. Oh, there he is, okay. Usually sits away. Mr. Moderator, Jim Coyne, member of the Economic Development Task Force. I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for the passage of the special legislation set forth below, provided, however, that the General Court may make critical clerical or editorial changes of form only to such bill unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill prior to enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. Section 1A, notwithstanding section 17 of chapter 138 of the general laws, the licensing authority of the town of Westport may grant one additional license for the sale of wines and malt beverages not to be drunk on the premises pursuant to section 15 of said chapter 138 to RNC Market located at 151 State Road, Westport. The license shall be subject to all of said chapter 138 except said section 17. B, the licensing authority shall not approve the transfer of the license granted pursuant to this section to any other location, but it may grant the license to a new applicant at the same location if the applicant files with the licensing authority a letter from the Department of Revenue and a letter from the Department of Unemployment Assistance indicating that the license is in good standing with those departments and that of all applicable taxes, fees, and contributions have been paid. C, if the license granted pursuant to this section is canceled, revoked, or no longer in use at the location of original issuance, it shall be returned physically with all of the legal rights, privileges, and restrictions pertaining thereto to the licensing authority, and the licensing authority may then grant the license to a new applicant at the same location under the same conditions as specified in this act. Section Two, this act shall take effect upon this passage.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah.
The motion is second. We have the Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee has voted to unanimously recommend Article Five.
Thank you. Mr. Corey, would you like to begin discussion?
Good evening. Uh, Brian Corey Jr., I'd like to speak in favor of this article. Uh, this article is about evening the playing field. In 1986, when we had approximately 5,800 residents in the town of Westport, we had the same number of licenses. Now, with over 15,000 and additional traffic, additional businesses, we have the same number of licenses. This license isn't just to a corporation, RNC Market, Inc. It's to Nuno Chitas. And everyone in this room is driven by his former restaurant that he spent 15 years building and establishing in the town. It's Porta Ci Dad. It's an establishment that has strong ties. I've known him for 15 years. He's been a great asset to the community, and this is about allowing a small business owner to even the playing field. It isn't for free. There's a, there's a great cost to it, a cost that, cost that will be paid to insurance companies, to the town of Westport for licensing. Uh, this is simply asking the town or authorizing the selectmen to get an additional beer and wine license. I'd ask everyone here tonight to, to give a small business owner, not a large corporation, the opportunity to draw the public into his establishment with beer and wine, not to be a primary package store or a liquor store, but to have the ability as a convenience to his customers to offer beer and wine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Sir, please step to a microphone if you'd like to speak.
I didn't think we'd be here this late, but we're already on Article 5. Uh, I'd like to say that-
Will you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry. Philip Totoni, please.
Thank you.
Uh, I was under the impression that there were no further licenses available in the town of Westport. By the, by the council agreeing to set this, uh, new, uh, it's setting, it's, it seems like we're setting a precedence that whoever wants to come into town can present themselves at this, this forum and request to have another license put in, into the town. At this particular time, most people are aware of the number of, uh, facilities in the area where alcohol, liquor, food, all these things can be bought eight places between here and the college. I'm hoping that people who vote no on this article and, uh, also be aware of some of the other mom-and-pop facilities in the city that may not be able to handle further competition at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, I mean, my name is Rui Cadaro. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of, um, the owner of this business. He's done very well in this town. He's a fine example, and I think we should give him a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Viera?
Mr. Moderator, uh, my name's Anton Viera, and I rise in support of this article, and I support the Board of Selectmen for recommending putting this before the voters. Uh, this is, uh, an experience for our town. Uh, we have people that sell all liquor licenses. The area that this establishment will be in previously had sold on all liquor. Uh, the gentleman is asking for beer and wine at this point, so it's not all liquor. And I think just a, a way of doing business, uh, if, for the types of services that the person has there, they're not drinking there, they're taking it home. It is a convenience, uh, and I think this is in fairness to the business environment within our community, that if we have others that come forward, we have to evaluate the merits of this. We, we have an establishment that's been around the town for many years, never had any problems for public safety. As a member of the Board of Selectmen for many years, I've seen many others that had. So I, I speak to, uh, a business that's been very successful and has supported our community, has paid taxes within our town for that, and I think we'd be, uh, really doing a disservice to our community if we didn't support a businessman who's trying to make that living in the town and make our town better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caesar?
My name is Arthur Caesar, and I'd like to echo what Mr. Viera said. This is a fine family. They all work in the store. They've done so good for all the folks in Westport. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goldberg?
Moderator? I'm not against businesses-
Will you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Chuck Goldberg from Westport. I'm not against businesses expanding and, and being in business and, and progressing. But the motion that was given is not this motion, Article 5, it was much more complicated than I could even understand, including, from what I heard, transfer, they can transfer this to somebody else without much problem. And that bothers me. I didn't read it, but I heard it said. And so I think that we need to have a little further discussion on this and see what the motion really is. It's not that, and that's what we're voting on.
Sir?
Moderator, Gilbert Susa Jr., um, I believe that license can only be, um, point of question through you, I guess, that license has to stay with the business. It can't be transferred unless somebody, he sells the business. It can't be moved to a different location, so it's stuck at that location is my understanding.
So, so your, your question is, is that the case?
That is the case, I believe, but I'd like to-
That is the case. Correct. Site-specific license.
Thank you.
So it's site-specific, can't be moved from that location?
Correct.
The owner can't do anything with it but sell it with the business if he sells it, right?
Right.
With that being said, I've known this gentleman 29 years. He's done nothing but build businesses, help the communities, communities he's been in, and it's not what is seen that he's done, it's the behind-scenes stuff that he's done for the people who can't afford things, the people who are in need. And it's not just based upon his personal merits, but I understand we have rules as eight licenses or whatnot, but I'm in business. I would love for this town to restrict my licenses to only eight dealerships. You know, that makes a monopoly. We got that with a cable system. We see all that works for us. Mr. Viera made, uh, excuse me, previous speaker made a very valid point.
Well done, thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, it's great.
First mistake of the year. Um, so, previous speaker said that, um, it should be based on each, uh, the merits of each, um, situation. I think that's a fine idea. I think, um, Mr., well, the business owner deserves a chance.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Willett?
I'd just like the body to know that there is another site-specific license. It's State Road Package. Uh, people probably know it as Tony's. And one other point is that he, uh, Mr. Chitas came before the Economic Development Task Force, which I chair, and we also support-
We want to try and avoid using names if we can.
What's that?
We want to try and avoid using individuals' names.
The, uh, the gentleman also came before the Westport Economic Development Task Force to present his ideas, and that was unanimously supported.
Great, thanks. Mr. Valcourt?
I'd like to call the question.
Okay. So, once again, if you, so we're now going to vote on whether to continue discussion. A yes vote means that you've heard all the discussion that you need to hear on Article 5, and no vote means you'd like discussion to continue. So all those in favor of calling the question, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. We now move to a vote on Article 5. All those in favor of the motion on Article 5, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Now, before, before I ask for a motion to dissolve, I'm going to ask you to please join me in giving a hand to the Westport, um, SoundTech crew, who under very difficult circumstances did a great job for us. May I have a motion to dissolve Westport Special Town Meeting? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of dissolving, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Thank you and good night.